Good evening. It's March 6, 2025. I will call to order the Smyrna Municipal Planning Commission meeting, and if you'll stand with us, I'm going to lead us in prayer. And Steve has the pledge tonight. You bow your heads. Father, we thank you for today. We thank you for our town. We thank how you've so richly blessed our community. Be with us tonight as we go about the town's business. Grant us wisdom and discernment. Help us to make decisions that are fair for all. Be with our employees. Father, we ask for an extra hedge of protection for our employees that are out in the field. We ask this for our policemen and our firefighters as well. Be with us as we leave the meeting tonight, and bless us as abundantly as you continue to do and that we are so thankful for. For us, in your name we pray. Amen.
Hey, Mr. White. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next item is citizens' comments.
We did have one person to request to speak, but it was past the deadline, so they weren't able to be able to speak tonight. They did submit comments in writing, and those were forwarded to you all this afternoon via email, so you may or may not have seen those. But they were, it was Mr. Greg Vogel, Lee Road, and he had some concerns about the Gwen Farms preliminary plat. And so I would be happy to kind of go with those when we get to that point, if you would like me to, what his concerns were at least.
Okay. Yeah, that's fine. And I think it's important at this point in time to note that the town's public comment period is reserved for citizens that have signed up to address the board or committee at least 24 hours in advance of the meeting, and this is pursuant to the town council's public comment policy. And speakers are limited to three minutes when this occurs. And of course, if they have any additional comments, they can submit those in writing, and we will take a look at it. So with that, we'll move on to approval of minutes of the February 6, 2025 meeting. Counselor, are the meeting minutes in order?
In order as per form, Chairman.
Commission, any questions concerning the minutes? I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Have a motion to approve the minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All of those in favor of approving the minutes, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? The minutes are approved. We're now on to old business. Under the first item of annexation zoning and plan of service request, Joe Haddix, Bill France wrote an Interstate 840 annexation of I-2, C-2, and R-3 zoning requests. Kevin, I understand this has been asked to be deferred for two months.
That is correct.
Okay. Are there any questions or discussion concerning this request to defer?
Just part of the paperwork reduction act. Every two months, we get this thick packet of papers. Is it possible to, if they have requested deferral again in the future, to forego the thick pack of papers?
If they've requested before the packet, I mean, coming to you, sir, we had one tonight that has requested since you've received your packet.
Just a suggestion. You don't need to answer it.
We can look at that, sure.
Okay. So now I'm trying to remember. So we've got a request.
Motion to, yeah, I'll make a motion to defer.
Okay. A motion and a second to defer. Any further discussion? All those in favor of deferring this motion for two months, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion is deferred for two months. We're now on to preliminary plats. First item is estates at Williamsport. Williamsport Drive, owner/developer RMG Development. And I understand they have also asked for a deferral, and this one is for one month.
That is correct.
Okay. Questions for staff concerning this deferment request? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to defer for one month.
Have a motion to defer from one month for Mark. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of deferring this preliminary plat, please signify, for one month, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion is approved and has been deferred for one month. We're now on to site plans. Our first item is Janet Ibrahim, Rocky Fork Road, owner/developer Janet Ibrahim. And I understand that we also have a request to defer for one month here.
Yeah, this one came in late this afternoon. They did submit revised plans and had to address some comments, but there's some others that need to be worked out and addressed before you all could consider it, and so they did request deferral for one month.
Okay. You've heard the explanation from staff on this request for deferral. Any questions or comments?
Move to defer for one month.
Have a motion to defer for one month. Do I have a second? Motion and a second. All those in favor of deferring this site plan for one month, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This site plan has been deferred. Kind of through deferrals at this point?
I think so.
Good. All right, let's do some business. So we're on to new business. First is a rezoning request. It comes from Robert Latimer, 657 and 698 South Lowry Street, rezoning request, PRD with LSO to PID with LSO.
This is a request on South Lowry Street. It's kind of just past Stewart Drive and kind of also butts South Side Drive, which is a private street there on the, off of Lowry Street. The current zoning is a PRD, which is a development, it's a townhome development that has currently the approval there. It has obviously never moved forward and been built. Proposed zoning is a PID, which is a planned industrial development, which is for climate-controlled storage, is the proposed use here. Surrounding zoning is a mix of C-2s and C-3s, and as well as the South Side Townhomes PRD, which is to the east there of the property. Landing plan for this area is the mixed-use center character area, which would support a wide range of uses and building types, such as retail, restaurant, and attached residential are particularly appropriate in this area. The major thoroughfare plan does designate South Lowry Street as a major arterial, and adequate right-of-way does exist there for that street. This proposed PID is for a 78,277 square feet self-storage facility. We had a comment regarding the required fire flow there with assuming a sprinkled building. The, I had a few comments. The required minimum number of parking spaces is 26, just a strict calculation per the zoning ordinance. They are showing 22. We've looked at it, and we're comfortable as a staff with that number of spaces for the development and proposed use, proposed use and size of the building. The required minimum building setback along South Lowry Street is 40 feet per requirements of the Lowry Street overlay. They have requested an exception to allow 25-foot front setback. The LSO does require awnings or canopies to be at least nine feet above finished grade, to extend at least six feet from the building face. We've got some pictures we'll show in a minute. They kind of looked at, the awnings they're showing do not meet those requirements. And they have a, we kind of have pictures that kind of compare the two, so you can see the difference. And they have, again, they have requested to be approved as they submitted them, and not meeting the requirements of the LSO. The, number nine, the landscaping requirements of the LSO will apply. We'll look at that in detail with the site plan if the rezoning is approved. They did request an exception to the requirements for the type and size of street trees and frontage trees along South Lowry Street due to utility conflicts, which makes sense to us. And then to modify the required type D buffer along the northeastern side of the site, they are showing fencing and buffer there. There's just not a berm shown there. And then last comment we had was for them to provide a sidewalk along South Lowry Street. So there's the plan, kind of the layout plan there laid onto the property. Parking would be access from Stewart Drive as well as from South Side Drive, split up into two lots there. The buffer area, the main buffer area is that area abutting the townhomes to the rear there. And that's where the buffer would be located. And this is, visible, this is on the screen. I apologize for that. But basically, the top picture is the building, proposed building, with awnings as, that meet our requirements. And the bottom building is awnings that don't meet our requirements. So they're, they're, they're shorter awnings. They don't extend out as far from the building. And then is the primary difference there. So. I believe that's all that I've got.
Kevin, a question related to the sidewalk along South Lowry. Can you go back a picture?
Sure.
So with the, right there, they've got this 51 feet from the road mark that they're doing, and they've got this 25 feet in front of the building. With the sidewalk, they're also asking for an exception for that front setback. So where and how would the sidewalk work into that?
Well, the sidewalk would be within the right-of-way. So that's, which is the area at 51 feet is from the edge of the pavement to the building. So, so you got 20, that's roughly 25, 26 feet between the edge of pavement and the property line. So.
So the sidewalk would go in that space.
That's, that's.
Their 25-foot request wouldn't change or move based on that sidewalk?
Correct.
Okay.
Kevin, being that this is a storage facility versus a commercial or retail type facility, when I look at these awnings, I wonder if the smaller awnings don't make more sense from an aesthetics point of view, because they're really not going to serve a whole lot of purpose otherwise.
Yeah, they're not really serving. I mean, there's, I think, one or two of them may be over one of the pedestrian doors on the first floor. It's kind of that basement, almost like a basement floor. But most of them aren't. They're really just over windows and things. They're not, they're not over, like in a retail setting where they're over an outdoor dining area for a restaurant or something like that.
That's kind of the point, yeah.
Right. That's true.
And the back buffer? We talked about the back buffer again. Fence and what type of landscaping?
Yeah, let me.
It's a D, it's a D-grade buffer?
Well, since it's industrial to residential, a type D is what would be required.
Okay.
Let me, if I can get to that page.
Is staff satisfied with what they presented?
Yeah. They're putting a fence, a six-foot tall fence, kind of on that entire, really even this.
All along the back?
The back, here and here, would have a fence on all of that. And then basically, it's still going to be, the buffer is still there. It's just they're adding the fence in lieu of any type of, like a berm.
And I noticed the plans, or this pattern book indicates a six-foot tall white vinyl fence.
Correct.
I have a question about parking. When we're looking at parking requirements, and I noticed what they've got listed for Laverne and Murphysville, is this what's required for an industrial building? And does it take into account both public and employee parking?
This is what's required. Our requirement is for storage, self-storage. So it's not an industrial building. And I'm assuming that the Murphysville and Laverne numbers indicate that's the same, same thing, so, as a storage building. So our requirement is one per 3,000. Looks like Laverne is one to four, and Murphysville is one to five. So, you know, that's, I mean, to answer your question, that is for self-storage, for all three, I would assume for all three.
Okay. I didn't know if it was strictly geared toward just an industrial development since, since primarily, you know, it's an allowed use in an industrial area where it's not in a commercial, except, is it my exception in commercial, or is it?
It's not allowed.
Not allowed in commercial.
Yeah. It's, it is something that's often, when you had the conventional self-storage, that everyone's, you know, the original kind of business model, single-story buildings, you know, you could pull directly up to your unit and load and unload. And so it really, that functioned as the parking for the, for the buildings instead of, other than maybe if there's an office, and you might have two or three spaces near an office or something. Obviously, this is completely different. This is, you don't pull up to the door, you have, or pull up to a roll-up door. And so you do have to park and unload your facility, your truck, or your U-Haul, or whatever you got. So, so you do have to provide more structure, not structured parking, like a structure, but structured in the sense of actual parking lots, where you wouldn't in the conventional self-storage model. So, you know, again, I think we're comfortable with the number. I mean, it's near our requirement anyway. And with looking at what other communities require, maybe we need to consider changing our parking requirement for this type of use, because it's, it is something that's been raised on other developments, similar developments. But I think most everyone else, as far as I can recall at least, did meet the requirements, or, you know, right at the minimum number.
I discussed this a little bit with Kevin, just because, obviously, this isn't a traditional roll-up style mini-storage, which is really what the current zoning ordinance was written for. So this really doesn't fit in C-4. It doesn't really fit self-storage, mini-storage. It's somewhere in between. And so that's what I suggested to Kevin, was maybe we look at what other communities are doing to account for this type of development. And has it become an exception process in the C-4? Do we, you know, maybe a BZA review for something like this, or something else? Because I think we're going to see more of these. This is kind of where they're going, is these building-style storage units. And it looks, it looks more like a C-4 product, being brick with windows. This is, if you didn't have a name on it, you didn't know what was inside, you might think this is a doctor's office. It's very similar. And so it's, it's a little different than our traditional industrial.
It's a very attractive building.
They're doing a good job. And I think it's important that the tinting, all the windows are tinted, different transparencies as you go up, so that, you know, what comes to mind is I think there's a similar building like this on I-24 at New Salem, and it's a U-Haul. I think when you get off there, you see all of the doors through the windows. And so it's kind of, it looks like a tall-story unit. That's what it looks like. Tinting these and kind of masking the windows, getting rid of the faux windows, putting in actual glass windows that are tinted, it makes it look much more attractive.
Was that, was that actually, I'm looking through this, as far as the window treatments, is that?
Right here. Yeah, it's in the, towards the back of the page.
Page 19.
19.
The back of the packet, yeah.
Kevin, what's changed? I know this has come up before us before.
Well, the building is significantly smaller than what you looked at before. It was about 90,000 or more square feet before. There were some, some of the, there's some transparency requirements we have in the LSO that they weren't meeting, that they are now, as far as the windows, like Mr. Sullivan was talking about. It didn't have the windows. It was just more just solid walls. And so that was certainly part of it as well. Those are the two main changes. Again, by reducing the scrap footage of the building, they were able to add more parking, get closer to our parking requirement. Those are the main things, I think, that are different than what you looked at before.
The one over there behind Champy's, who's been there a few years now, anytime I go by there, I just hardly ever see any cars there at all. So it might be something we'll get from at least this type of structure.
Yeah.
There's a lot of parking places, and hardly anybody sits in them. I could be busy on a different day. But that may be something we need to study.
As I'm looking at it, coming on Lowry Street, it will look like, more like a four-story building from Lowry.
It will.
And then again, from behind, where the, some of the townhomes are, it'll still be...
It's a three-story on that, on that side. It's kind of a partial, almost a basement level, partially. They're just, they're taking advantage of some of the topo, the property as well.
We'll recognize you if you give us your name and address.
Thank you, Tim. Appreciate it. Rob Moltz at SEC, on behalf of Robert Latimer, to kind of go through some of the changes we made since last May, after listening to some of your, your wants and wishes on this property. The last time we did reduce this building by roughly 20,000 square feet, it was additionally, originally 98,000 square foot, we're down to 78,000 square foot. That allowed us to get us a little extra room for parking, to bring our parking line, our parking requirements and our provided parking kind of more in line together. Like we said, we're, by the code that's today, we're required 26, we're providing 22 at this point in time. So compared to when we were here back last May, we were at 33 required and only providing 12. So I think that's a pretty significant increase in, plus the reduction in the size of the building on that side. One of the architectural components we had before was the split-faced block that was on the base. We removed that altogether. This is all brick building across the board. We also removed the exception for the maximum height. We were actually going beyond the maximum height requirement. So we removed that, brought the building down in height and scale. As Kevin talked about, the transparency, we got that taken care of by adding more additional windows on those upper floors. And then two, we also have more than doubled the space between the back of the building and the townhomes that were back there. That was one of the big questions that was asked last time we were here, because we were only roughly about 20 feet off the boundary line. So we're roughly about, about 37 feet off the building to the townhomes on that side. So we now increased that gap between the boundary line and the back of the building that's closest to the townhomes by more than double that distance on that side. So gives a little extra separation between us and the townhomes on that side. Ms. Wise, in regards to your question, I think it's the buffering on the backside, I think, is that correct?
Yeah, I asked that too.
Sorry, Mark. The buffering on the backside, if you look at page 21 of the book, as you can see, as Kevin talked about, the, we're requesting a modified type D buffer. So the illustration on the bottom of the page there gives you an idea about what that buffer would look like between the back of the townhomes, those patio areas, and the storage building itself. So you can see the existing grade lines and proposed grade lines are shown there on that cross-section. So you can see our building's actually higher than the site with the townhomes next door. So we're incorporating that six-foot tall fence. But what we wanted to do with the modification was to take that second row of required evergreen trees out behind the fence. So you've already got the evergreen trees between the townhomes and the fence. The fence is there on the backside, where those evergreen trees deadly more or less provide a level of screening to the townhomes, a more decorative nature towards the storage facility. We wanted to incorporate canopy trees to get us a quicker level of verticality in screening on those trees back there. So that way, you kind of get a visual breakdown between the actual building itself and the back of those townhomes by adding that extra layer of height in there on that side. So that's the request for the modification of the, of the landscape buffer on that side. But we will be providing a fence the entire length of that rear property line going through there, but the buffer itself is only behind the townhomes. That's the only place we're required to put that in. So that's where that modification is. So we kind of give a better level of separation between the townhomes and the back of this building and the parking area on that side, so.
Rob, since you're standing there, and this is still on the board up here.
Yeah.
The awnings, what, what is the thought process with the shorter length as far as awnings go?
We've always started with the shorter ones, just from the get-go, just from an aesthetic look on the building itself. When we were presented with staff comments in regards to using the LSO, we actually had my architect go back and show me what that actually looked like. And looking at the image on the top of the LSO version on that side, where you've got to extend at least six feet out and be nine foot out, you know, nine foot above grade level, this, that kind of lays itself into being more of a functional type of awning or canopy over top of, say, a pedestrian or a mall-type setting or an outdoor dining area kind of thing. So if you're thinking about a walkable, commercial development, you'd want to have these things. So if you had some outdoor seating outside of a coffee shop or something like that, providing some kind of level. I feel like what the LSO is asking for is a more functional. But with our building being a storage facility, and you only have X amount of people coming to the building per day, and it's not something where you're actually sitting down or walking by, you're coming from your car and going directly into the building, and then going into the enclosed storage environment, that we wanted to do something that was a little more, more, you know, does not, kind of pronouns itself so greatly across the building based on what the LSO is asking for. When I first looked at it, I kind of felt like those were solar panels stuck hanging off the side of the building when you look at the LSO version. Ours are just more decorative in nature, and it was really one of those things that a couple of these storage buildings we've done in the Gateway District didn't incorporate those awning type of features. And I thought it was just something to add a little extra character to the buildings themselves on that side. And so it wasn't so much that we're trying to get away from the LSO asks for. I think it's more about the question of, is it a functional thing, or more an aesthetic piece to the building on that side, so.
Okay. So on the third floor, there are windows, faux windows?
Yes. So, so between the version you guys saw last May and this version, we have completely removed the block windows, the brick windows, and these are actually all glass panels across, across the entire face of the building. The only place that has any block is actually on the back side of the building, which is where that little appendage sticks out in the backside, which is where our closest point to the townhomes are. We didn't feel like there was a real need for putting windows on that side, so we just kind of left that. But the rest of the building itself is all windows.
The one under is showing three levels per, on the Lowry side. The request doesn't show a row of windows on the top floor, the third floor. Some of the other drawings do. I'm just trying to figure out which is the operative one.
Which one image are you speaking of in your booklet?
Well, here you only show three, unless I'm not seeing it on the Lowry side.
The Lowry side, you have, the Lowry side of the base is more or less like, well, we kind of wanted to make this look like a faux storefront on the basement level. So that basement level is more like storefront. So that's actually taller windows and doors on that bottom floor there. So it's actually more glass than the upper stories and other upper stories. Because the way the site falls from the back to the front, we're using that front side as a, as a, as a basement level. So there's about 12,000 square foot in that basement level on that side, so.
No, no, I got that. I'm only asking about, under the request, if you look at the left-hand side, there's three levels of windows. If you go to the front, the Lowry side, there's no windows on the upper level. I'm just asking which.
Yeah, he's saying this right here doesn't look like windows.
Oh, it's just a reflection in the 3D on that side. If you look at, if you look at the windows on the image above, that's all windows.
That's what you're doing?
Yeah.
Yeah, there are windows there. If you look on page 17 of the booklet.
Right, 11, it's got the windows on the others. Okay, good.
Anything else for Rob? Thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
Any questions for staff or any discussions for the commission that need to take place?
further?
Well, it does appear they really listened at the last meeting and made significant positive revisions to the project.
Really addressed the parking issue as well by doing that, by downsizing the building.
Oh, the look of it, the whole, yeah.
Everything.
It is still a big building coming inside, coming into the town.
Yeah, I think it's worth mentioning, though, this piece of property's already been approved for townhomes.
Right.
And so, in my opinion, this is a better option for that area from a density-traffic impact to the community.
I'll, I'll tell you, I voted against this previously, and part of it had to do with the, the use that was here, but in, you know, driving by the site and looking at it, and I think we, I'm trying to recall, I think we're looking at the back of some towns that are there. To me, it dresses it up, it, it does look like an office building. And from an aesthetics perspective, I'm satisfied with it at this point. Any other discussion? Not all entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments from Charles, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Just for clarification, just so we can make sure we get everything documented correctly, that includes the parking, as requested for parking, setback, awnings, or the buffer. And staff's comment was to provide a sidewalk along Lowry Street. They actually would request to not put the sidewalk there, so I want to be sure, we didn't, that's not, we didn't actually talk specifically about that, so I want to be sure.
Yeah, I think they should.
Because the motions.
Yeah, I believe they should.
Okay.
Charles, so your motion was that, as Kevin summarized, and to include a sidewalk, correct?
And to include a sidewalk, correct.
Okay.
Steve, and that's what you second?
Yes.
Okay. Motion?
Thank you for the clarification, just wanted to be sure we got it right.
No, I'm glad.
Yeah.
We're good. So, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving this project with staff comments, and as we discussed, and including the sidewalk requirement, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
This motion is approved. Okay, we are now on to our next item, which is a preliminary plat, Gwen Farms Phase Five, Lee Road, owner, developer, Lennar Homes of Tennessee LLC.
Okay, couple things. In your packet on this one, the, the comments were a little bit out of order, so you're going to have to go past a couple. Apologize for that, we did get those in there. Yeah, the, the next two items are in front of this one in, in your comment list there, so I do apologize for that, just so you know, so you can get to the right sheet there. So, yeah, this is, this is the preliminary plat, it's Phase Five for Gwen Farms, it's twenty-two point six acres. This is the townhome portion of this development. Everything to this point has been all their, all single-family, this is the townhome. Well, Phase Four had a few townhomes in it, but this is largely, this one is, is the rest of the townhome. Excuse me. So, we had several comments, many of these are standard comments that would all need to remain. I will make one note, on comment four regarding Lee Road is a collector, and they would require dedication right away there, per our thoroughfare plan, as a collector. So, essentially, comments one through nine would all remain kind of as standard comments. Comment number ten, there is an off-site sewer main to connect to the Olive Branch trunkline. They have shown the routing for that, they do still need to provide our actual construction plans, but they have shown the routing for that now, which wasn't on the previous submittal. Number eleven, submit a roadway lighting plan, that's been addressed and can be removed. The comment twelve, there was a traffic study done for Gwen Farms when it was originally zoned annexed, or actually, I guess it was annexed at the time, personally was already in the city and had to annex some of the property too, it was a little low. That, that study is now six years old, and then they came back later and added the southern kind of portion of it, and so that, this portion of it wasn't included in the original study, I think. So, we, we wanted to ask them to submit a revised study, so include the development of this parcel. Obviously, any recommended improvements would be required to be installed by the developer. We did go ahead and ask, make a recommendation to install the left-turn lane into the side off of Lee Road, and that the main entrance road from Lee Road should be constructed with three lanes, a single entrance in the right and left turn leaving. So, that was our comments on that. We have not received that traffic study to this point, they have indicated they would have that to, they would submit it before submittal of construction plans. Number thirteen regarding the easements, labeling, and dimensions can be removed, it's been addressed. Comment fourteen regarding the drive-by widths and parking spaces, that's been addressed and can be removed. Number fifteen, the property assessor shows, there's actual separate parcel of land that kind of is in the middle of this whole development here, that actually is labeled as a cemetery. They've indicated that all of the existing cemeteries, they did relocate those, as they can do under state law. So, we, they, they need to talk, we still told them they needed to deal with the property assessor, because the property assessor is still showing a cemetery in that area, so they need to work through that with them, so. Numbers, comment sixteen, that some of the lots, the, the areas weren't correct, were obviously not correct, so we did, they did, they have corrected that area issue and can be removed. Comment seventeen regarding crosswalks and eighty-eight ramps, that's all been shown now, can be removed. Comment number eighteen, that was from our fire department regarding making sure that all, all four sides of the townhome buildings could be located within a hundred and fifty feet reach of a road, that has been, that can be removed, that's, that's okay. Comment nineteen, they have moved some amenities in the, from an easement, so the amenities are still shown, they're just not located in an easement anymore, so that, that can be removed. Comment twenty was to shift sewer service lines out of driveways, they're not, that hasn't been done, they've indicated that Mr. Parker had agreed to that, we want, Mr. Parker's out right now, we want to talk with him before we remove that comment, so we want to keep number twenty. Comment number twenty-one, it has, regarding wire service size and details, has been addressed and can be removed. And number twenty-two regarding the blow-off areas have been placed behind the sidewalks, so that's been, that can be removed as well, so. Essentially, all of the comments, other than really number one through nine, or really one through ten, twelve, and twenty, need to remain. Excuse me. I do want to just, as I said earlier, Mr. Vogel did submit comments, he, he is the piece of property on this drawing, right here, is his property. And he has concerns about a, he mentions three things. One is the easement on his property, I don't know what easement he's just, is mentioning, so I, I can't really address that. Talks about the proximity of the retaining wall and the buildings, there is a retaining wall proposed in that area, next to his property, between the townhomes and, and his property, and so that was his concern there. And he has indicated that when this was annexed, the developer's consultant did mention or that there would be a landscape buffer there. There is nothing shown on the PRD plans about a buffer in that area, like a natural vegetation, like a barrier there. There's nothing shown on, on PRD, but they had mentioned it correctly to him at the meeting that there would be one, so that's why, and so he is concerned about that as well. And his request was basically to get a copy of everything, as well as to, you know, sufficient time to look at it before the planning commission approves the files, so I just did want to relay that, since he did send that to us today. I mean, there is, the retaining wall is here in that area, it's a pretty significant wall. I will state that, just so everyone's clear, the retaining wall is, is a cut on the developer's side, so it would not be a retaining wall that would be above Mr. Vogel's property, would be kind of not as visible from his side as it would be on the townhome side, so I would state that. But anyway, that's, I guess that's all that I've got.
So, if I'm understanding correctly, as far as an easement, usually when you're talking about an easement, it's, it has something to do with ingress, egress, it could be utilities, it could be different things that are granted, but there's...
Yeah, I don't, he, he mentioned an easement on his property, and I don't know.
But there's absolutely no easement that's included with this plat that would involve any of his property, is that correct?
That's correct, there's no, there's no easement on his property that is, this property is taken some sort of advantage of as a utility or any otherwise.
Okay.
So, so again, that's the part I don't know that I can address, because I don't know what easement he's discussing, you're mentioning.
And I'm looking at, I don't know what page this is in the plat, but...
C one one.
C one one. It shows the retaining wall, and I see what you're talking about, like, Mr. Vogel's property is at seven forty-eight, seven hundred forty-eight feet above sea level, looks like the wall starts at like seven forty-four, seven forty-two. So, his property is higher than at least the start of the wall. Do we know how tall this wall is?
The wall, I looked at it, it's, I think at its highest point, it's about twelve feet, I think. At some points, it's only, it's less than a foot, it's just kind of, it kind of goes up and, you know, depending on the grade. Again, it's, it's, basically the wall is going to be on the townhome side of, they're going to cut, it's a cut situation with a wall holding back the remaining earth, not fill, that they're putting a wall up to hold back fill, so.
Yeah, so the, the street width on this one, based on where it's at now, is like seven thirty, so there's about a twenty-foot grade from the road to Mr. Vogel's property, naturally.
Correct.
It, it seems like, you know, if they cut out ten or twelve feet to level all of that, even if they went down to that seven thirty, it would still be below his line of, the line of his property probably.
The, the wall is going to be, you know, basically at the level of his property and can be, can be cut on the, the townhome side, yeah.
And it's not proposed, based on this drawing, it's not proposed to be on the property line, it's adjacent to the property line, but it's not right on the property line, is it?
There's, there's some space in between the property line, it's, it's not directly on the line, you know. And they did indicate a fence would be on top of it, so there will be some sort of a fence, you know, so that some from, from Mr. Vogel's property can't, would not have a fence there between them and, and going, not fall over the wall.
Are you here representing?
SEC.
Okay, yeah, if you'll give us your name and address, I'm sure we have a few questions here.
John Minor with SEC, eight fifty Milton City Boulevard, Marcus Pro. As Kevin said about the wall and the buffer, Rob informed me that we had agreed to that during the rezoning process verbally, so we will comply with that. So, we've already discussed, we will move the retaining wall farther in to the site, away from the property line. We will be planting evergreen trees basically along the top of it. The fence is a safety measure, so of course that will, will remain, but that will provide a, a buffer between adjacent property and the site. Additionally, the, the wall height does vary, but at some points, it, Mr. Vogel's property will essentially be in line with the second story, but none of it will essentially be level with the, the first, the first story.
So, let's talk about this buffer, I want to make sure that we're clear...
Clear.
On, on what we are going to accept, or, if we're not, except it doesn't matter, but as far as what's acceptable. So, what are you proposing, and I, I know you mentioned trees, is this for, does this encompass just around the retaining wall, or does it extend further, or where are we at there?
Rob Moltz at SEC. My recollection, my conversations with Mr. Vogel, which is probably four years or so when we came back with the revision to the Gwen Farms PRD to add the property onto this, to have us connection down to Lee Road, was that we would provide at least a minimum double row of evergreen trees along his property line. Now, that was in relationship to where the townhomes were along the property line, it wasn't that we were going to do the entire length. My recollection, and I wasn't aware of this till I got here tonight for the meeting to do more research on what we've got, my recollection is because that drainage way that's to the north side of those townhomes has trees along it, that we said we would extend it from the trees down beyond where the townhomes sat. So, that's kind of where I left the conversation with Mr. Vogel a number of years ago on that side, and that's still the commitment from our standpoint, is to move forward by doing that buffer along that section, so.
I, I appreciate that. Let's, Kevin, let's, let's clarify here what we are, what staff is, you've, staff is requiring...
As far as...
Or, or acceptability as far as what Mr. Moltz just gave us.
On C one one, it pretty much shows the retaining wall goes almost to the corner of Mr. Vogel's property, so almost, the townhomes, you know, about three-quarters of them are, are directly behind Mr. Vogel's property, the other...
I see what you're saying.
Quarter is, is behind the other property. I mean, I, I'm just wondering, could we, I don't, I don't know what that other piece of property is.
Well, Rob, you said, uh...
Mr. Lee's property.
North of the townhomes, there's a natural tree buffer there.
My recollection, yeah, from where that drain, that drainage...
You would extend it from that area all the way down to the bottom?
Yeah, so from, so from, along his property line, which is where the, where the retaining wall stops.
Hang on.
Yeah, from where the retaining wall stops up to the, where the trees with the existing drainage way comes through is where we talked about adding in those trees to protect his interests.
Go to the highest point with your clicker there, there down to where the townhomes end?
No.
I think the, the creek is right here.
Yeah.
Going on this recollection, associated with this creek and the buffer, there's existing tree line canopy along with this, so what we would do is from this point, where's Mr. Vogel's property here, extend up to where the canopy and or underbrush is growing at this point in time, that we wouldn't be removing with the construction of this, we would extend that buffer from this property line up to there to protect it.
Where's Mr. Vogel's property, is that the...
Right here, and down.
Right, so we're talking about buffering half of it?
This isn't his, this isn't his.
He, he, that's Mr. Vogel, the other one's, is a different property.
Obvious direction, sorry.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, I thought, we're not even protecting Mr. Vogel there, right, yeah.
Minutes ago on that side, so, yes, so wherever Mr. Vogel's property is, we, we promised to move and do, you know, buffering along the property line, so we would bring it from this corner down, protect this view, go to the back of the town.
And so, to Tim's question, I'm going to ask it again.
Thank you.
Let's, let's explain what that buffer clearly is, because this has been, it's been a sore point.
If I can offer a suggestion, a type-C buffer is a, is two, basically two rows of evergreen trees.
On which side of that rock wall?
It'll be on, it'll be on Mr. Vogel's side.
On Mr. Vogel's side.
Mr. Vogel's side of the buffer, I, I think this, a type-C buffer would be required.
Would that be extended to where the natural tree line is?
From, from wherever the natural tree line is.
And that's to remain undisturbed?
Yeah, or if, I don't know what the situation is, if there's trees out there now or not, if, I don't know if it's an undisturbed or if it's, you have to go back and plant, you know, but, because I don't know what the, I have no idea what the natural vegetation that exists in that area is, so.
How wide would this buffer be with the wall and the trees? Any idea?
A type-C is fifteen feet.
Plus the wall? Or would the wall be in that fifteen feet?
No, that would be on the wall side of, or the Mr. Vogel's side of the wall.
Okay.
Yeah, so you had fifteen foot from Mr. Vogel's property line over to establish that fifteen-foot buffer, and then the retaining wall would be beyond that, so more or less the buffer...
It's probably closer to twenty feet.
Yeah, by the time you get to the edge of the wall and, you know, all that stuff... Yeah, by the time you get to the edge of the wall and, you know, all that stuff, you have about 20 foot of separation between property line and the face of that wall going down, so.
Because I know we've do, we've started doing 20-foot buffers where we can.
Where we can, yeah. And of course, this is obviously predates that, but yes.
So this should effectively, from a line of sight standpoint, provide relief?
Yes, yeah, since, since his property and, and this property are opposite sides of things on that side. The trees would be higher, so it'll be more at his ground plane up there and the townhomes would be recessed below that. So you're getting whatever retaining wall height you have, plus the initial six foot of trees that will eventually grow to 20, 30 feet high on that side, so.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else for our engineers here?
The only question I still have is the, the distance of that buffer. Are we saying only along Mr. Vogel's property or from the natural tree line here all the way down? Whether this is disturbed or not is kind of irrelevant. If it is disturbed, then it needs to be buffer. If it's not disturbed, the natural one can stay. Is that what we're saying?
That would be my recommendation just because, you know, this is also, this is the same county RM zoning as, as Mr. Vogel is.
Right.
And there is a resonance on that. I can't remember exactly where it's at. There is a resonance on this track. So I think if you, if you start here, just wherever this natural vegetation ends, take a type C buffer down to the southern end of these townhomes where just past, which is probably roughly, my recollection, looking at the plans today, I think the, the retaining wall goes just past the southern end of the town.
Yeah, it looks like the retaining wall goes about 30, 40 feet past the townhome, so.
So somewhere in that area.
From there down to the end of the retaining wall.
From wherever that natural, existing natural vegetation is along the creek, start there, go 15 feet deep past the townhomes.
There's nothing that we're doing here that would affect what we don't even know about his easement?
Yeah. The easement, the easement on his property, I, I have no idea what that involves.
But it's nothing to do with what the developing?
I've read the email and I'm wondering if he meant encroachment and not easement. He was concerned about the encroachment on his property, not easement on his property.
Okay, maybe that's where I'm at, yeah.
Okay, yeah, that's what I was thinking when I read it. Sorry, thank you. Didn't know you were here.
Yeah, so I don't know the, so I'm not, again, I'm not aware of like, we have another place in town where we got an easement, an access easement and different things that's causing a lot of issues right now. So this, that's not that, so. So parks in the retaining wall and, and the vegetated area were the other three things, or the two, other two things that he mentioned that he was, what he was worried about.
Okay. The open space in the front, is that detention or is it just open space?
Yeah, right here.
It's a mix.
I think there is definitely, I think the natural drainage is more towards the east, so.
There's nothing clear to be built there. Not as far as that. I didn't want to see them come down
Yes.
in the front and.
This, this part is, is strictly open. The, the detention ponds, at least on this side of the, the stream or here and here. And then on the other side, there's one here and here.
Okay, but all that still will remain open.
Correct.
Okay. Anything else?
So shifting gears, this is consistent density, number of units with what was previously approved?
It actually was amended and, and the density went down. This whole area here was going to have housing in it. That's all wetlands, so they're having to avoid all that area. And so the density actually was reduced, I don't know, a year or so ago, I think roughly. They amended the PRD a little bit and, and reduced the density. But it is consistent with the current approved PRD. If I answer your question, I'll go further.
Okay, anything else?
No, but Kevin, I would assume if you're asking for an additional traffic study, the amended portion of it may actually be beneficial to the original traffic study, would you think? By removing density?
Yeah, because it's, well, when this came, the original PUD did not include this property at all. And so when they added this property to it, the density went up, or the number of units went up at least, not necessarily density. The number of units went up because they added more property. And so that's the part that we need to, and now that's going down again a little bit. But I think it's still more than what the original study considered, so.
Thank you. Okay. Anything else? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay. Quite a bit of discussion here. I think we've worked out some things. Are there any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we approve with staff comments and the addition of the type C buffer extending from the natural vegetation at the creek all the way down to the end of the buffer wall or of the retaining wall.
Kevin, good? Counselor, good?
Does it cover all, that covers all of Mr. Vogel's property?
Yes.
Well, not, it does not cover all of his property.
Whether so.
It covers everywhere there's housing.
Well, that's, that's, yeah, that's what, you got, that's what I meant.
Okay. Do I have a second?
A second.
Motion and a second. Further discussion. All of those in favor of approving with, subject to staff comments and comments regarding the type C buffer, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This preliminary plat is approved. Next, we have Southlight subdivision sections one and two, Phase One, Drew Street. Owner, developer Scott Hilton and St. Burke.
Captain, I'm going to stand in this room.
This is the preliminary plat. This was, the development was recently annexed and it came in under a different name. It was called Queen Cliff at the time, and that was just kind of a placeholder name based on the, the, the road that the property owner had access to within the Stonewood development. So this is now called Southlight. The, this is the preliminary plat. This is for Section One as well as part of, first part of Section Two as well. It's 111 lot, 39.42 acres. The, has access from Drew Street as well as from the adjoining Linwood development. Which is still, so they'll have to get, construction acts will have to be built to get them access to the development. We had several comments, they're standard comments, that would all need to remain really all one through 11. Or all standard, or I'm sorry, one through 10. That all need to remain. Comment number 11 regarding one of the road names, having approval from 911 Board, that has been taken care of and can be removed. Comment 12 regarding contours at two-foot intervals on all the sheets, that has been shown and labeled, so that can be removed. Comment 13, there is an existing 50-foot ingress egress and utility easement on some of these lots. They, they have, we asked for that, is that to be removed? And they responded that yes, it would be removed. So when this, the file plats for these phases get recorded, that would have to be indicated to be removed, that easement, at, at that time. So they did answer that question, so we can remove that comment. Number 14, there are some of the easements, they did label several of them. Some of the easements don't follow property lines necessarily, and so we asked for some distances. They've done it on some, but there's a few that still need to be added. So we'd ask, want to keep comment 14 to make sure all those are done. Number 15, the cul-de-sac is required to be 96 feet in diameter. They have shown that, so it can be removed. Number 16 can be removed, it is no longer needed because they changed the phasing back to what was approved with the PRD. So we can, we don't have to worry about that anymore, so we can remove comment 16. Comment 17, they do show the floodplain area. We do need the boundary and the elevation is labeled. That still has been done, so we need to keep comment 17. Critical lots, we had a couple of lots because of Cinco that need to be labeled as critical. They have shown it, but they show a double asterisk. Our reg execs referred it to single asterisk, so we just want to clarify the labeling on that one. Number 19, Golden Oak Road is a Knabrick collector. They have now shown that, so which is correct now for the entire length, so that can be removed. Comment number 20, they have submitted an auto turn. The fire department needs to look at that. We, they have got the right fire truck now, so they did submit a revised auto turn. So we just need to allow, I want to keep that comment just a minute to allow Mr. Lawrence to review that. So. We did ask them to show easements, and this is kind of related to the other comment we just talked about, that along property lines whenever possible, you can just show those dimensions. If it's not possible, it just shows extra dimensions, you know, where the easements begin and end. Number 22 was a comment from our utilities department requiring sewer design connections to the existing sewer. So we need to keep that. The size of the stream crossing, Mr. King will need to review that. We didn't have, people in meetings all day, so we hadn't had a chance to take a look at it. So we need to keep comment 23, and then 24 and 25 are from CUD. So. Kind of go recap, keep comments one through 10. Good. Yeah, keep 17 and 18, 20 and 21, and 22 through 25. So just those comments. With that, staff would recommend approval.
Okay, questions for staff on this?
Could you discuss the landscape buffer to the east?
Oh, there was, I don't know if there was, is a buffer. This is all single family. I think, I can't remember what the, there were some requirements within the PUD. I know abutting Stonewood. The whole buffer requirement here, because this was single family, abutting single family. Before our requirements that we currently have in place would require a buffer. So, yeah, there's not, not a buffer shown.
I'm hearing a buffer's not required, though.
Right. And there was one where they, this property abuts Stonewood, there was an extra setback requirement. These lots, we haven't got to that part of the development yet, so these lots cannot be subjected, or subject to that requirement.
There's, the way I'm reading this, there's no access to this Phase One until Linwood develops. Is that correct?
That's correct. And this, this developer and the Linwood, or developer is the same for both developments, so. Right.
It didn't look like it was locked in.
That's correct.
And other than the change of, change of name, the density and number of units is consistent?
Yeah, this, this meets the requirements. There were some requirements, one of, one being that's a little different than most of our PRDs. These, these are, do you have 10-foot tight setbacks? That was one of the requirements at the time that the PRD was approved. The lot sizes and widths and all that is consistent with the PRD, yes.
Other questions or comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion we approve with staff comments?
A motion to approve with staff comments from Steve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Amy. Further discussion. All those in favor of approving this motion with staff comments, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? This motion is approved. Our next preliminary plat is Tucker's Point, Phase One, 8613 and 8675 Rocky Fork Ambleville Road. Owner, developer Tucker's Point Venture Group, GP.
Yeah, this is the, the single family portion of this PRD. There, there was a townhome portion of this that would be coming back later. But this was the PRD that was recently amended and reduced the, the density quite a bit on it. Of course, the overall number of units. This is, again, the single family piece. This is, they're, they're showing 60 lots. One of those lots is the future townhome lot. There's really 59 buildable single family lots, 38.82 acres. It's, again, several standard comments, one through nine, which would all need to remain. I will note that this, they are showing dedicated and the right of way along Rocky Fork Ambleville Road as required for our thoroughfare plan. Number, comment number 10 would need to remain. This was really just effects the adjoining development there, like there's some right of way dedicated there for cul-de-sac. That, that cul-de-sac's going to go away because it's going to connect into this development. So they would just need to, to remove that right of way and, and as well as the road. But they've shown that to be done, but we actually have to amend that plat, so that would need to remain. Comment 11, they've added a note that's been addressed and can be removed regarding the address labels for those alley loaded lots. We do have 911 road names and then 911 approval of those names, so we can remove comment 12. Comment 13, again, we've, we've got, most of these were done, but we do still have a few easements that need to kind of label and just show the dimensions. So we need to keep comment 13. And 14, we, we can remove comment 14 because they're, that's all shown in one easement, that is correct. Comment 15, not all the sewer lines have been labeled or sized yet, so we need to show that, comment 15. We can remove comment 16 and 17 are in critical lots. Comment 18 will need to keep, again, just a labeling issue of the offsite sewer. They did show the sewer main, so we can remove 19. Comment 20, they still need to show and label the water line size. We've got the height shown, it's the main comment 20, just to remove the first part of it. We can remove comment 21, again, they still are showing the right of way dedication now. Comments 22 and 23 were CUD comments, so they would remain. So let's, uh, make sure I get, so comments one through 10, 13, 15, 18, 20, 22, 23, all need to remain. Opposed comments, we would recommend approval.
Consistent with what we previously looked at?
Consistent with the revised PRD, yes.
Okay. Questions for Kevin on this? Doesn't appear to be any questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve, staff comments.
Have a motion to approve with staff comments. Do I have a second? Motion and a second. Further discussion. All those in favor of approving this preliminary plat, subject to staff comments, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This plat is approved. We're now onto the next portion, which is final plat. So our first one is Bryley Downs, Section One, Phase Three, Rocky Fork Ambleville Road. Owner, developer, South Coast DFH Nashville LLC.
Yeah, this is the, this is the next, the final plat for Section One, Phase Three of Bryley Downs. This is 29 lots, that's just under six and a half acres in that PRD. Several standard comments, one through seven, would all remain, just all those standard comments. Comment number eight, we still, do still need 911 approval for the road names. So we need to keep that. Comment nine, just a standard, really a standard comment to add the signatures of the owner and CUD part of this middle of the plat for recording. We need to keep that. It did show the size of the water line, so we can remove comment 10. And the temporary turnaround, they do still show it is only an 80-foot diameter. It is required to be 96 feet, so we'll need to keep comment 11. And then comment 12 and 13. And then comment twelve and thirteen are CUD comments, we need to remain, so, basically, with comment ten removed, remaining comments, staff would recommend approval.
Is it consistent with preliminary?
Consistent with preliminary plat, yes, sir.
Okay.
And the PRD.
Discussion and/or questions?
I'm going to stay out of items one, two, and three, abstain from those.
Okay, so noted.
Move to approve with staff comments.
Have a motion to approve with staff comments from Amy, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Steve. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving this final plat, subject to staff comments, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This plat is approved. Our next item is Bryley Downs, Section One, Phase Four, Rocky Fork Ambleville Road. Owner, developer, South Coast DFH Nashville LLC.
Now, this is just the next, Jason Phase, the Phase, or Section One, Phase Three, this is Section One, Phase Four. Sixteen lots, five point six-seven acres. Again, very similar comments to, to the previous Bryley Downs plat. Comments one through seven are all standard and would need to remain. Comment eight, still needs to remain regarding the road names from approval. Add the owner and CUD signatures, still need that. Again, they did show the water line sizes, so we can remove comment ten. And then comments eleven and twelve are from CUD, so with, basically remove comments and with those remaining comments, staff would recommend approval.
And consistent with PRD submittal and preliminary plat?
That's correct.
Okay. Any questions or comments concerning this agenda item?
Move to approve with staff comments.
Got a motion to approve with staff comments from Amy, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Charles. I have a motion and a second to approve with staff comments. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approval, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion is approved with staff comments. Next, we have the courtyards at Stewart's Creek, Phase Two, Rocky Fork Ambleville Road, Restoration Drive. Owner, developer, Epcon Stewart's Creek LLC.
So this is Phase Two. This is the, uh, uh, this was the fifty-five-plus development there on, on Rocky Fork Ambleville Road. This is forty-two lots, eighteen point four-four acres, so this is the final plat for Phase Two. Again, several standard comments, really one through eight are all standard comments and would, would need to remain. A comment number nine regarding the, they had, they've addressed and removed kind of that blanket easement comment from all open spaces, and only put the easements on those where they're needed. So they've, they've taken care of that, so we can remove comment number nine. Comment number ten, we had an easement width at three, or Lot Thirty-five, we needed the total width shown, so they've done that, so we can remove that. And then comments eleven and twelve are CUD comments, so we just leave those comments for them. So we can remove comments nine and ten, and so with those remaining comments, we would recommend approval.
And once again, consistent with the, the PRD submittal and the, the preliminary plat?
That's correct.
Okay. Questions for Kevin, or any discussion from the commission?
Just a curiosity, so this product is selling well?
As far as I know, and there's, several of them are under construction, so I think as far as I know they are. I haven't heard anything different.
My understanding is they are, and, you know, Smyrna has been consistently ranked as one of the best places to retire in Tennessee, and I think this goes a long way to, you know, continue that and, you know, to take care of our, our seniors. You know of any?
No. Not at this end.
I was going to say, you can let them know about this if you do. I'm not sure I see any up here.
I know a lot of seniors, I do.
Other questions or comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve with staff comments.
Motion to approve with staff comments from Amy, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Steve. Further discussion? All those in favor of approving this motion, subject to staff comments, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This final plat is approved. Our next item under final plats is Villagewood Townhomes, Phase One, HPR, Country Village Drive and Wildwood Drive. Owner, developer, Infinity Home Builders.
So this is the HPR plat, this is the, for the Villagewood Townhomes, the site plan you all have seen fairly recently for reapproval. This is just their, their Phase One to, to dedicate their easements and create the HPR. This is thirty-nine of the units, this is thirteen point six-three acres. Again, several standard comments that would need to remain, really one through four. Comment number five, they do still need to add the signature and stamp of the land surveyor, and then add the signatures of the owner and attorney that's creating the HPR prior to submittal of the platform recording, so five and six would need to remain. On, comment number seven, there was some crosswalks that needed to be added. They've taken care of several of them, there's one still needed on Mountain Dell Drive by Unit Two-O-One, so that would need to amend the comment, add that little caveat there. And then comment number eight can be removed regarding the townhome buildings within a hundred-and-fifty-foot reach of all of the road, so we can remove that one. So with number seven amended and remove number eight, and then the rest of the comments, we would recommend approval.
Kevin, are, you got to be surprised if I ask you if this is consistent with the previously submitted PRD and preliminary?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, he's going to be surprised.
He's going to be, you're surprised?
I'm very surprised.
Okay, any, any questions for Kevin, or discussion with the commission? Not, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving this final plat, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This plat is approved with staff comments. Now we're on to our next agenda items, which are our site plans. Our first is City Barbecue, Pilot Place and Allen Sewer Way. Owner, developer, City Barbecue, Inc.
This is a site plan for City Barbecue, which is proposing a new location within the Sewer's Landing Development, with frontage on Sammerly Parkway West. This would be located on Lot Seven within the development. Currently, there are no active locations for City Barbecue within Tennessee, so this would be their first location, assuming they get it up and running, so, pretty cool. Access to the site would primarily be served from Pilot Place, but secondary access point via cross-access easement across the two parcels to the southwest there through lots five and six. Vehicle use area in the site, just over a half acre, which would require two thousand four-hundred-and-sixty-four square feet of landscaping. Applicant is proposing for six thousand seven-hundred-and-sixty-two square feet, meeting our requirements. Parking requirement of thirty-three spaces, and they're showing for forty-three, and that would require two handicap spaces, which they are showing. The landscape plan shows shrubbery lining the perimeter of the property, which, with street trees shown along Sammerly Parkway West, parcel line satisfying the street scape requirements. Additional shrubbery is shown around the base of the building and the landscape alleys. Variety of trees are proposed in landscape alleys throughout the site. Architecture elevations show the building to be finished with a mixture of brick, glass, glazing, beeper, and metal coping. All four elevations are shown to meet the designer requirement of the seventy-five percent primary material. Smokers are shown on the western elevations and are to be enclosed with a black powder-coated fence for safety purposes. A patio area is shown for dining on the southern elevation, which would front the Sammerly Parkway West roadway. As presented, the building doesn't meet designer view requirements. We had a couple standard comments, all would remain, one through six, and we had no staff comments, all have been addressed at this time accordingly. So with that, staff would recommend approval. With the remaining standard comments.
Questions for Mitch about this?
I think this is our first one for Sewer's Landing, isn't it?
This is our.
Well, this is, I guess this is our.
Yeah.
Third site plan.
Yes.
With the, the gas station, and then the, the one a couple months ago for the four buildings there in the entryway area.
But I think to your point, this is exciting to see this start to, starting to develop and move toward creation here, which is going to be a great addition for the town of Smyrna.
Do you know if they have a senior discount?
I had not had the opportunity to ask.
There might, there might be a representative here if you want to ask, Charles.
Five minutes ago, we didn't know any seniors, and now all of a sudden.
Oh, I admit it, I do.
Anything with the building or the site plan? Now that we're working on the other. Hearing none, so I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve with staff.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving this site plan, subject to staff comments, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion is approved, welcome to City Barbecue.
Welcome to Smyrna.
And to Tennessee, right?
Yeah, Tennessee too, yeah.
All right, thank you. Okay, our next item under site plans is Sixseaters Business Park, Building K and L, eight-eighty-nine Seven Oaks Boulevard. Owner, developer, Sixseater Investment LLC.
This is Sixseaters Business Park proposing to develop the final two buildings for this development, which would be Buildings K and L. Points of access to the site are already established off of Seven Oaks Boulevard via an access easement from the property to the east and south. The buildings are proposed for office and warehouse use, which is consistent with the other buildings for this development, and then the development to the southeast. Building K is proposed to be eight thousand square feet, and Building L will be fourteen thousand square feet. Square footage of vehicle use area for the site, just over one acre, which would require four thousand five-hundred-and-thirty-nine square feet of landscaping. Applicant is proposing for four thousand six-hundred-and-one square feet. Total parking required of thirty-five spaces, and applicant is showing for seventy-seven. Handicap parking required of four spaces, and they're showing for four. The reduction of the one space from the time packets went out last week was due to the addition of these handicap spaces, which would take up a little bit extra space, so there's a reduction in the overall number of parking spaces, but still easily meeting our requirements, and now meeting ADA requirements for parking. The landscape plan shows an eight-foot privacy fence along the eastern property line abutting the townhome development, in addition to evergreens and shrubs. There would be, this would be an extension of the existing buffer that was completed during a previous phase of this development. Additional trees and shrubs are shown within landscape alleys throughout the site. Landscape buffer is required per the zoning ordinance along the northern property line of the site, which joins an apartment complex. Currently, no landscaping is proposed in this area, this is a waiver that we'll bring up again a little later here in this report. The applicant is requesting a waiver from the ordinance department as far as that buffer is concerned on that northern property line. Architecture elevations show the buildings to be finished with brick and glass glazing on the front and sides of the building. The rear of the buildings are shown in metal with roll-up doors. As proposed, these elevations do not meet designer view, but are consistent with every other building that has previously been approved within this development family developed to the southeast. Standard comment, one through seven, all remain at this time. Staff comment one, we asked them to show the number of units and tenants for each building for address and purposes, so that has not been provided yet at this time, so that comment will remain. Number two, it's more of a standard comment that a retaining wall over four feet would require a building permit to be obtained. Comment number three is regarding the landscaping. A type-C landscape buffer is required along the southwestern property line abutting the apartments. Developer has requested a waiver from this department due to the fact that, quote, the retaining wall for the apartment, apartment building located to the northwest of the site measures approximately nine to ten feet in height, with an additional six-foot masonry screening wall on top, resulting in a total height of approximately fifteen feet. Given this significant elevation difference, the buffer would have minimal to no impact on the screening of the site. Planning Commission does have the authority under the zoning ordinance to authorize for the existing fencing or vegetation to be used as all or part of the required landscaping buffer on this area. Comment four, there were some numbers that were just kind of sitting there on the cover page that we asked them to add some definitions to, and they have done so, so comment number four could be removed. Number five, four ADA parking spaces were required, only two were shown as part of the previous unplanned, or when packets went out to you last week. We asked them to show two ADA spaces to meet the requirement. They're not showing those two ADA spaces. They're in the rear of the, one of the buildings, we're going to ask them to shift those ADA spaces to the front of the building, so amending comment number five to just, to say, amend the location of the ADA spaces shown on the site to the front of the building out. Comment number six, regarding the building elevations, metal is considered an accent material per designer view and cannot exceed ten percent of the entire building. Both these buildings do exceed the ten percent threshold, however, the design is consistent with other previously approved buildings within this development and the adjacent Seven Oaks Business Park development. Staff would recommend maintaining the architectural consistency with the adjacent buildings, which means leaving it as presented here tonight. Going back to comment number three, regarding the landscaping waiver buffer that they're requesting here tonight, staff would recommend, after visiting the site, staff would recommend adding some kind of a buffer there. Part of it, it's a little difficult to see on the elevation page, but it's visible. The, if you can see, there's three chunks to that apartment building. That southern chunk is where the retaining wall really stops adding in height. So beyond that is really where we'd like to see the additional of some kind of a buffer being added.
Cause the retaining, yeah. Retaining wall kind of goes this whole area, but to about right here, it's only about six feet tall. From here on down, they'd actually have like a wall above it that goes probably, that was put on, on the apartment side on their property, that's probably, is probably another, it probably is a total twelve to fifteen feet tall here. You have a big giant wall here, but from here down, really to where you have some existing buffer there between kind of right here, it's, it's not as tall, so.
So staff's requesting a buffer from the end of the retaining wall, is that what I'm hearing, to the other?
Really, kind of from here to here is kind of the most important part, because you have a, an open fence area at the top of a wall here, this is going to be very visible at this location. If you had some trees that get twenty or thirty feet tall, at some point, it would help.
Let's define that, is that from the back unit forward, or let's?
Well, there's an existing tree, the buffer here.
So from that buffer.
From their point down to wherever this, that would.
Just use that back building as a reference.
Yeah, this, yeah, this right here, this, this portion of this, of the apartment building has a fairly tall wall there already.
Okay, so starting at that point.
From that point to where that existing buffer ends right here, in that area.
So is that the recommendation to do the same?
We could just say type-C along those two buildings, those.
Yeah, really, that, types, like a type-C in that area, that's kind of, this has a fence, there was, of course, these are townhomes, they're much shorter built, this is a fence and landscaping here, we're not talking about, there's no need to put a fence.
Right.
Really just, just landscaping here, like a type-C type buffer here, kind of in that, from the end of that existing landscaping down to wherever that fence that's on top of the retaining wall is from, in that area.
Typically, the ordinance would require the entire length, but we'll give a little concession to it.
Yeah.
Okay.
And the ten percent metal is really just the back door, the back sides, correct? And that's consistent with everything else?
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, the ten percent is concerned accent material, and that's why it's how we know, so.
And I think in, in the past with the other buildings, there was some concern with functions in that you would have vehicles that would be loading and unloading there. Is that, is that how I remember it?
Well, I mean, I think that was part of it, and then also, of course, they, they elevate all the HVAC units and everything too, but I think our concern at the, the only time it really popped up is with the ones that were visible, that could be visible from the townhomes, and that's where we put the buffer in.
Okay.
And, yeah, that's where we really started. Every, they, the way they orient all the buildings, you really, you really can't see any of the building.
From twenty-four.
Yeah, from twenty-four or from, from Seven Oaks Boulevard.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think a lot of that complex to the, I guess, south, has a lot of metal on it already, right?
Yeah, that's, so this is all part of the same development, really.
And we've been consistent over the years where we've had a certain design.
Right.
Or, or pattern to, as we've had additions either to a building or to a subdivision or, or development, to stay consistent with that.
Right.
Okay. Other, go ahead, Charles.
Where are the dumpsters on the site?
There's one to the north, I guess. James, you're pointing. By that little, where it tees in off of Seven Oaks and comes back into the site. There's one.
Is it up here?
Yeah, I believe it's right there.
I couldn't recall.
There's another one further down in the site, too, elsewhere.
Okay. Okay, Charles?
Well, I'm just wondering if it's, uh, shielded from the residential areas.
It would have a, any type, yeah, they would have to have a dumpster enclosure around it, yeah.
Other questions? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve with staff comments in adding the Type C buffer as recommended by staff.
Okay. I have a motion to approve with staff comments, including the Type C buffer as detailed by staff. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving this motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion is approved. Now, it should take us to the March bond review report.
Yes, um, got a short one tonight on a couple items. Uh, one is, uh, Gwen Farms 2A, uh, it's about 89% built out. Um, talked with the developer, they plan to pave the streets in April, no later than May. Um, their bond does expire the 18th, so they will need an extension, so we would recommend a six-month extension to allow them to, to get that work done hopefully, uh, this spring, as they stated they want to. Uh, Cedar Hills, Section 4, Phase 1, this one is 100% built out. Um, they have, uh, do have a contract in place to install the top coat, anticipate that being done in mid-March, uh, when the asphalt plants reopen. Uh, this bond doesn't expire till the 10th of April, um, so if that is done before the 10th of April, certainly we, we could reduce that bond and extend it one year as the maintenance bond, um, otherwise extend to twice.
Okay.
That's all you?
Any questions concerning the March bond review report? I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve the bond review report.
I have a motion to approve the March bond review report. Do I have a second?
Enthusiastically second.
Okay, I've got enthusiastic second. Any enthusiastic discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The bond review report is approved for March. Uh, staff comments?
A couple things, uh, kinda related to the same thing. Uh, there are, we are, um, nearing completion of our, uh, update to our major thoroughfare plan and bicycle pedestrian plan. We will be having a public meeting on that, on the 18th of March, which is a Tuesday, uh, at the Event Center. It's kind of an open house style meeting, so you can kinda come and go and see what we're, look, talking about. Uh, that's from 6 to 8 that night. Um, and the next time that the planning commission and council are having a joint discussion, which will be at their, before the April workshop, council workshop, um, it is our plan is to, to kinda present that final plan to everyone that night, so, or that afternoon, rather, um, with hopefully an anticipated May-June timeframe to adopt the plan, so, that's, that's the update on that. That's what I got.
Anything else from staff? Anything from the commission? We stand adjourned.